All right, we're gonna call the regular schedule, June council meeting to order. I wanna thank everyone for coming, welcome all our citizens and everyone that's tuning in on the line as well. Uh, we'll open up, excuse me, we'll open up with our prayer and pledge. We asked, uh, Mr. Woods if he believes in a prayer and we'll follow with our prayers.
Let us stand. Father in heaven, we thank you again so much for all of your many blessings. Thank you again for this gathering on tonight. We thank you for our mayor and thank you for all of our council, as well as all of our department head. And most of all, God, we thank you for grace, we thank you for keeping each employee safe. And God, now we just pray for those that are sick. We pray that Master that you would bless those that have lost loved ones. And most of all, we pray that Master for the unconcerned. Bless those that Master that have not, because that Master, we know that you're God of plenty. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Place of flag, we, I pledge my praises to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. All right, call the roll, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Here.
Mr. Lau? Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
All right, we have one set of minutes, minutes to approve from, uh, May council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Is neither there a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Ray is the second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods, if you will cash your votes. Motion carried, move on to, um, on the mayor's report. Let everyone know that we'll be closed, uh, June the nineteenth, in observation, uh, Juneteenth. So all of our city offices, uh, building offices, uh, administrative offices will be closed on the nineteenth. Uh, wanted to say a, set a special call meeting date for our second reading to approve our budget. The budget committee met and we went with the twenty-third for that meeting at six o'clock. So, um, well, that works for the majority of the budget committee, if that work for the council, we'll add that.
What day of the week was that?
The, it's a Monday, the twenty-third, not this Monday, but next Monday.
What, what, what time is it?
Six, okay.
On the twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
And that will be the second and final reading of the budget. All right, that's good. Next, the oath of office for the newly elected official, officials in the last election will be July the first. That date is set by the charter, so we'll have to have a special hall meeting on July the first at twelve noon to, um, do the swearing and oath of office for the newly elected council members for July one at, yeah, at noon. So if everybody will put that on their agenda, we'll, I'm pretty sure office staff will put together a little reception for any of the family members that wanna come for the oath of office. Red, white, and baller will be July the third, put that on your calendars at the lake. Uh, guys, haven't had a chance, they've put the, the pavilion is up and the stage is up and they're finishing up. The final touches and stuff down there at the lake is looking real good. So June, July the third for the fireworks show. Uh, and make sure you get your tee shirt sizes to carry with you. She didn't have all, I guess you probably already got all of them, but if you guys would like a tee shirt for the, uh, red, white, and baller celebration. And that will be on the, uh, third. And if you guys, um, also, let y'all know the, um, the electrical and stuff, I think is about the only thing that's left down there. If you have a chance to go down and look at it, so. All right, that's all that I have on, uh, mayor's report. Also, I didn't put this on there, but I want y'all to know the ICE building, we approved that bid last month and they've started the electrical and stuff out there, so that's moving. Uh, trying to get all that back on and lights and stuff out there, so they're making some, making some progress. Like Mr. Watson says, slow progress, but progress. All right, do we have any public comments? Next, we'll move to standing committee reports. First, the electric board, uh, they approved their fiscal, twenty, twenty-five fiscal year budget and that was the only actions that they had at the last board meeting. So that's all on the electric report, uh, Mr. Knuckles, utilities.
Good evening, council, mayor. Uh, board met last Wednesday at noon, uh, we discussed the following. Uh, we're gonna have the bid opening, uh, on the galvanized waterline project over here on Keller, uh, that we opened last year. Won enough contractors, that's gonna be this week, the twelfth. And T-Puck will be here in two weeks to do our annual gas inspection. And the gas prices for the month of June were seventy-two cents a, seventy-two cents a g with foot, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.
All right, thank you.
Next, fire chief Price.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, my report, uh, total fire call was eighty-eight, um, eighty-two in the city, county has six. Training hour one-seventy, smoke alarm installed, twelve, fire code inspection fifteen. Um, just wanna take a minute and took, I don't know, lots of town, we have people, they do work, nobody never, we don't brag them, I just wanna brag on, uh, a couple of my staff right now. Wanted to say thank you to Ms. Sarah Rice for, the state of Tennessee, out of, we going to a new reporting system, how we report our fires to the state fire marshal. Six hundred and fifty fire department in the state of Tennessee, ball was only two, so start onboarding early, out of, out of Tennessee was two of them. It was bothering out on the other, uh, city, but I just wanna brag on her for getting our reports and stuff in. Also on our first responder, them guys ran seventy-seven call last month, sixty-one call this month, and not one of them guys have complained about running. And they are making a difference in the state of Baller, that's my report.
That's good. Police chief John, I'm sorry, assistant chief Henson, chief John is out sick.
Good evening, council, mayor.
Good evening.
Uh, police department report was six, six hundred and thirty-three calls for service, one hundred and ninety citations issued. We had twenty-two accidents, sixteen of which were property damage, six were some sort of injury involved. Um, we made sixty-six arrests, forty-two adult and fourteen juveniles. Um, we had fourteen special saturation task force events and two hundred and sixty-three hours of training.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, thanks.
Next, parcel, right, Mr. Ford.
Evening, mayor, council.
Evening.
Parks and Recreation Department reports on the following. Our youth summer golf league began on Wednesday, on last Wednesday, and of course, we will run every Wednesday through the months of June and July. Our summer basketball camp started on today, actually, and it'll run every Monday, Tuesday for, throughout the month of June. Uh, we have our adult soccer free play that's occurring at the city park, uh, just random days. We already have the net out and we put the lines down for the field for those that wanna participate. And lastly, we continue to work on those washouts at, uh, Pleasant Run Creek Park on the walking trail. And we're fixing or cutting the grass out there at the armory, so that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Mm-hmm. Next, uh, streets sanitation, Mr. Mayfield.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, department heads, general public, Jerry Mayfield, Baller Street Sanitation, this is my report. Uh, residential trash, we had a hundred and thirty-one point two-six tons, commercial, we had three hundred and nineteen point five-six tons, for a total of four hundred and fifty point eight-two ton. We continue to work on Tate Road and, uh, we continue our grass and weed eating as normal around town, so that's my report.
Y'all always say I'll steal the fire, I'll, you didn't say it, but Tate Road will be open by the end of this week, so, drumroll.
Hopefully, hopefully, hopefully.
He scared to say it, but Tate Road gonna be open, all right.
With, with, with a lot of help, a lot of help from Mr. Mayor, the ladies up here in City Hall.
You would think that was about it.
I really had a lot of help.
We appreciate y'all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayfield, I, he done lost about thirty pounds in the midst of trying to get Tate Road. Yeah, and, uh, his team and then, like I said, utility department, everybody, everybody.
I'm getting the girls in City Hall getting their numbers straight.
Oh, yeah.
When I get it some order, they have me getting it.
Like, uh, we'll finally, uh.
Working together.
Have it up. We gonna have a fire department over there to wash it off, so, it was a team effort. All right, a lot for him, Ms. Becker.
Good evening, mayor and city council.
Hi.
Uh, I have the May report for the Baller library, we took in one thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy cents from donations, copies, finds, and faxes. We had a total of six programs with thirty participants, we had two passive programs with twenty-three attendance. Our estimated patron, patronage count was five hundred and twenty-nine, we had fifteen bookings for our meeting rooms with twenty-two guests. Our total circulation of all items was one thousand three hundred and eight, we had two hundred and eighty-seven computer users, two thousand four hundred and forty-eight Wi-Fi users, five hundred and thirty-eight Reed users. We had sixteen history room visits with three on the microfilm readers, our interlibrary loans, we borrowed twenty-eight and loaned twenty-one. I also wanted to let you all know that our summer reading kickoff starts this Friday, the thirteenth. We have programs planned every day of the month through July, so please, if you have kids or any, you know anybody that has kids, there's adult programs as well, um, tell everybody to come over to the kickoff and sign up, we'd love to have.
Please help promote that, they do some great programs over there and there's not as many kids that we wish we could get to come out, so.
What's the timing on that, what, what, what time is that?
The kickoff starts at one.
One, one, okay. Thank you, Ms. Becker, uh, compliance, uh, Mr. Watkins, and I forgot to mention with, under the streets sanitation, if y'all, T-Dot is paving sixty-four, so. Help spread the word, be careful, we already had a fender bender today, people, uh, bottlenecking and watching the, watching the poor ass fall, I don't know how to sign that either, but, um, so just be careful going through. It's gonna be a long process, but we wanna get it done, so let's, let's support them and let them get it done.
I think just watching them dig it up today, it'll really get exciting when they start forward.
Go ahead, Mr. Watson.
All right, uh, my report is as follows, building consultations, five, permits written, one, inspections, two, plumbing inspections, one, mechanical inspections, one. Courtesy notices issued, thirty-five, and, um, we're still trying to get folks to cut the grass and so forth, so we working on it.
Hey, did you get the ten house right down from Chief Price, that house on that corner that you do, keep hollering?
He's got another day or two, and if he don't, then we gonna try to get Jerry and him on it. Of course, Jerry and him, they had a lot of folks tied up out there under too.
Yeah.
We gonna try. We did cut, was it Karen?
Yes, sir.
We cut Karen, um.
Yeah, the house right down from Chief Price on that corner.
And that's on, that we know when you talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, corner.
Yeah, same fellow's got one over.
It's so big, we got animals growing around on it.
Yeah. He could, he could cut hay, that's for sure, that's for sure. Got the same situation over on Oak, same owner, so, we, we working on it.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, next, uh, tourism and community development, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Um, for the month of May, I spoke at the retired teacher luncheon on behalf of Mayor McTisick alongside Mayor Paulson, Representative Shaw. Uh, we took the timeless treasure senior adult group on their second outing to Casey Jones Village, uh, thanked the hospitality, uh, there, they did a great job and, uh, the group had a great time. We've already got signups for our next one, which is, uh, Hagie's, and I think we actually also have signups for the one following that, which is Discovery Park, so, uh, that's really catching on. Uh, we've also got a pretty good number of, uh, interested people for the overnight stay trip that we're going to go to Pigeon Forge, uh, with them. And we've got some interest from Chester County Senior Center there, they're wanting to kinda come in with us on that, so, uh, we're excited about what we can do there. Uh, hosted music on the square for Devco on the twenty-third, and, uh, the Timbers hosted two different events, uh, in the month of May.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, uh, his story, it's on, Ms. Mo.
Uh, we met with Mr. Stevie Melanowski, who's our new, um, Tennessee rep for historical zoning. He actually went and toured some of the sites, um, and we're discussing how to expand the historic zoning. And, um, we're talking about having a training, probably at the Louise Theater, I think they did the last one there, which will be for the commissioners, but also the public, so we can learn about what historical zoning is and what we can do to, you know, get some of the grants and things that are available to us here. Anything else, Karen, Ben?
Thank you, Mel, plan, Mr. Gold?
Yeah, the proof, last month, we made an approval of plan for service for annexing BEA property, rezoning, positive recommendation, approval of shack for plat, positive recommendation, uh, amendment to H-one zoning, aligned business, positive recommendation. And there was, uh, like, in H-one, like hospitals everywhere, no tobacco, no, uh, liquor, beer, nothing in that zoning, that's what they were talking, and that includes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gold, all right, don't have any old business on the agenda, we'll move on to new business, we'll turn it over to Mr. Joey for our audit for twenty-three, twenty-four. Been a long time.
It's been, it's been while finally getting here, hope y'all are doing, doing well, and I'm glad y'all are patient with us this year. Um, I'm gonna do like I normally do, hit some of the high spots, y'all are in great financial, uh, position and do a good job of, of, of being fiscally responsible. And then I'm gonna open up to any questions y'all may have. Um, first, I wanna turn to page four, um, and just to explain what our opinion was. It was something unqualified, meaning the books were clean, we feel like they are accurate representation of, of the city's financial statement, uh, or position. Um, if you'll turn to page sixteen, it's gonna be the, uh, it's gonna be the balance sheet for the governmental funds. And there we got two columns, we got the general fund, and then we have the other governmental funds, which is the state street aid and drug. Um, you can see that in, at June thirtieth, twenty-four, we're sitting on roughly four million dollars in the bank and the general fund. Um, and our liabilities were, I mean, one point three million, so we have a fund balance of four point three million, that's really good, y'all are doing a great job with that. Um, if you turn to page eighteen, that's gonna be the statement of revenues and expenditures for the governmental fund, uh, for the general fund and, uh, uh, state street aid and drug. Uh, we showed, uh, a positive change in, uh, fund balance for the non-governmental funds of twelve hundred. We did show a loss, um, of forty-five thousand in the general fund, but, I mean, things happen like that, we, we typically show increases, this is just a one-off kind of a deal, I'm not worried about that, it happens. Um, if we were doing this three, four, five years in a row, we may have some comments, but this is just a one-off and I feel, feel like we, we got that under control. Um, page twenty is gonna be the statement in that position for your proprietary funds, which is water and sewer, natural gas, and sanitation. As you see there, water and sewer is sitting on, you know, roughly four million dollars, natural gas has eleven million, eleven and a half, sanitation, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, can be tempting to go out there and get some of that money, but, you know, that's for projects later on and, and, you know, infrastructure and stuff like that. On page twenty-two is the, is the statement of revenues and expenses for those three proprietary funds. Uh, we had a positive, uh, increase in front, in that position of a million dollars for the water and sewer, four hundred and forty-five thousand for natural gas, and forty-six thousand for sanitation. Uh, the, the only really I have, you know, negative in this thing is we did have a finding, and it was the same one as last year of our, uh, bid process. Um, but I think we're gonna correct that by upping that, I think we've talked about upping that bid process and y'all were, yeah, okay, didn't know if it had been done, I knew it was in the process. So I don't expect that to be a, any issue going forward, and I, I would expect for this finding to be out, and there'll be no findings again next year. So that's really all I have, like I said, I do audits for a lot of towns in Tennessee, y'all are one of, uh, one of the, certainly one of the easiest ones to work with, and great people here, but very strong financially and, and very fiscally responsible. Now, I'm open up to any questions, and, and, and please know too, if something comes up later, please reach out to me, I'd be more than happy to, to get in depth or, you know, if there's another question that pops up when you do some more looking into it.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir, Ms. Moore.
When did you submit this to the, uh, city?
Uh, let's see, the date on the report.
And the reason why I'm asking that?
Yes, sir.
Is that it's not fair to, for us to get it tonight, uh, and expect me to look over this in five, ten minutes?
I brought that last month, um, and then the electronic copy was delivered.
I just got it tonight.
No, you just got that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You got the, that, you just got, you got those on your email and they, you just got that pretty copied tonight, but, yeah, we sent that out, two, three months ago.
My email, I don't, I might have to bring it up, but no, I didn't miss it, I just, uh, if it emailed, I don't have a printer to print nothing out anyway, first of all. And, uh, I just think that we need to get the whole booklet so I can look over it just a little bit better, 'cause looking at that email.
Yes, sir.
It's hard to read it on the email.
I agree, I agree, we'll get you a copy, hard copy.
It's just hard for me to read it, but to see this, now I can read this, you know? And, uh, and I just think that to be on the first side is that we should get this before, maybe a day or two before.
Yes, sir, I did drop off the hard copies last month.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't know you couldn't see your email, next time I print.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll, we'll get you a hard copy, promise, next time, Ms. McKinnon.
Yeah, yeah, I just made the booklet, and, uh, let's see, cause like I said, I don't, where I'm at, yeah. I think you just done went over this on page, oh, shucks, let's see, page six, that you were speaking of the financial highlights.
Yes, sir.
And could you go in a little more depth, I think it's, you know, the financial highlights, as of close of the current fiscal year, the city told the government, uh, funding, funds reports in balance of four point five-three million, decrease of forty-four thousand, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, so that was just, uh, where we showed a, a, a small decrease, we spent a little bit more money than we brought in, and that, that happens sporadically sometimes. We typically are showing an increase, I can't, I, I can't tell you exactly why that happened without really going back and looking this a little bit more detail, but the short, short story is, it was just, we spent more money than we brought in.
Okay, uh, page eleven, which I guess that's, I'm assuming that's basically the same thing, is what you're seeing.
Mm-hmm.
Saying in general, I'm reading where it starts, that the general fund balance, what is it, one, two, three, four paragraph, the general fund balance for four point twenty-nine million at the end of the current fiscal year, down forty-five thousand from the previous year, is that?
The same, yes, sir, same, same thing, yes, sir.
All right, for right now, that's all I can, yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
All right, uh, thank you, Joey, y'all do a great job, I appreciate working with y'all.
Appreciate y'all, I mean, it's, y'all need anything.
Motion to approve, uh, audit.
Second.
Who was that motion, motion by Ms. Ray, second, Mr. Williams, uh, we'll cash your vote.
Get them one out again, yeah.
Call the roll there.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Golden?
Hi.
Mr. McKinney?
Hi.
Ms. Miller? Mr. Ray?
Uh.
Mr. Williams?
Uh.
Mr. Woods?
All right, motion, motion carried, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. All right, how's approval for, uh, the bid of work for the neighborhood, let me get that out here. So last week, I don't know what day it was, the, on the neighborhood, we, the grant we got, the contractors and our engineers, we had three, four bids submitted. So the low bid was grinder, table grinder, which is the same company that we're working with, is doing Sand Beach Lake. They had the low bid of three eighty-two, twenty-seven, uh, the next bid was four ninety-five, forty-nine-five thousand. Um, the bid after that was five twenty-seven from designs team, design team, sign company, and the highest bid was Wagner General Contracting at six hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, normally, we would go with the low bid, the low bidder, uh, took their bid out because they had some miscalculations, they were off by like forty thousand in their calculations of what they submitted. Uh, so the engineers is telling, uh, saying that we should, uh, go with the travelers casualty, I'm sorry, I'm running wrong, go with, uh, MSB Contracting for the four hundred and ninety-five thousand, which the grant construction amount was five hundred and nineteen thousand, which we're under, quite significantly under the bid, even with the second highest bidder, but with that, um, with them miscalculating that bid, even though they're still would've been lower if they'd have added that forty thousand in there, due to bid regulations, we can't accept it. So they did, grinder, table, grinder came by Friday and they took their bid out, uh, and apologized, like I said, great company, they just, they miscalculated their numbers on some, so. TM, TLM is recommending and asking approval to go with the low bid of four hundred and ninety-five thousand from MSBC in Jackson.
Right, the motion that we have sent there?
Uh, motion by Mr. Williams and second by Ms. Ray.
How about this one again?
The bid, the, the, the bid that we're asking for approval is the four hundred and ninety-five thousand, and the grant was, construction budget is five hundred and nineteen thousand. I have a motion in a second, if you will cash your votes. Motion carried, now we have the, uh, first reading of ordinance twenty-five zero zero five, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of all of chapter twelve, hospital district, section ten, twelve oh three, to include select business uses, uh, basically what this is, right now, that's H-one, and it doesn't allow for certain type of business. There's a group that would like to, if y'all familiar with the old doctor, I call it the Dr. Nichols office, but medical clinic over there next to the hospital, uh, there's a group that wants to put in a business there, a mixed-use development, and that, the way H-one reads now, it wouldn't be allowed to do, put be, put there, so what the planning commission did is asking for the council, they make a positive recommendation that we, uh, change the text to include professional services, uh, as well as, uh, limited food service.
Someone wants to put a restaurant there, isn't it?
Yeah, so it'll be a multi-use professional service, uh, Kim is here, if y'all want to, uh, speak with her, I can, so public reading, public hearing on this will be next month, but if y'all okay with it, if she, she can tell you a lot better than what I can, exactly what they're doing, so.
That came to public last month, correct?
Say it again.
Is this who came to public last month?
Well, they came to the planning commission, yeah, so this is, yeah, so, yeah. My name's Kim, you share with us, y'all.
Good evening, council.
Hey, good evening.
Well, uh, so, I'm, this Baller is my hometown, um, live in Jackson, but I'm here in Baller, my mom's still here, I come to church here twice a week, and I wanna see my hometown. I mean, I'm, I'm pro-Baller, right? So if you, if any of you've been to Jackson, there's a place called Madison Place, and so what this is, is luxury suites. So I was like, you know, I wanna do this, I wanna bring this to Baller, 'cause I hear, one, this one's closing, this one closing, this one's closing, like, no, no, Baller don't close. And so what we're trying to do is turn, is, mayor was correct, is Dr. Nickel, it was a doctor's office. And so we will convert the, the building into these luxury suites that would include, so let's say, uh, she decided she want to sell snow cones, okay? And so it, you have to have your business license and, but you would have a suite, so you would sell your snow cones from the suite, but what would be included, so now we got a low price. So your rent is gonna be so much cheaper than what it would be if you had tried to just rent this whole building out. So it's gonna include Wi-Fi, it would include internet, and so you pay us and now you have money to live off of, and so we. And so we want to see Bolivar thrive. There is an old pharmacy, so we have not accepted any application. So as far as what businesses will come, we'll be very selective. Um, but no applications have went out. We haven't, first of all, we don't even know. If we have it yet, so we have not did a contract with the owner because we wanted to do due diligence of protocol. So that's why I came tonight in case you guys have any questions. And if you approve, or when you approve. Then we could go to the public reading and then we will start contract uh beginning August first. So that's what it is, is just to open up luxury suites. Again, no alcohol, no tobacco, no nudity. Just good living, you know, the, the food was included because there is a pharmacy with the drive-through window. So we just never know what that particular space could end up being, but it won't be a sit-down restaurant. How do?
Way better than I could have, though.
But that's basically. At the planning committee, they, they talked about that, like if somebody want to go into a business like that, you could rent one of them places. If it didn't go good, you ain't bought nothing, you just renting, you could get out and go.
That's right.
Whatever, so it's kinda, kinda some new uh for, often a newer, different people want to get something started.
This, this is coming, unfortunately, I'm not the originator of the thought. I am the originator bringing it to Bolivar. But in Jackson, it's a place called Madison Place. It's on Carriage House. So I'm not sure if you, any of you, you can actually look it up in Google. Um, but it's there in Jackson and that's exactly what's inside. Um, I actually get my heard on there, so. Just, you know, boutiques, uh, they had a place where you can get food. So just all these different businesses under one roof. So the rent is very affordable. Because all of the expense is now being divided amongst, instead of one or two people, you may have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen people. So.
In order for them to be able to get business licenses and be in compliance with our zoning ordinance, we would have to amend the text to allow that to happen, so. That's what this ordinance does and we pass this tonight and then we'll have a second reading on it. Um, have public hearing if there's anybody of support or against or whatever, they can come up and speak, but. We don't have any questions, any other questions, there are motion for approval of ordinance twenty-five oh oh five.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Gold, who will cast your votes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, motion carried. We'll have the second reading on our next council meeting. What's the second, Monday of July? Well, no, hey, I can, we can do that. We have a special call meeting the twenty-third. We can add it to the agenda for the twenty-third on June, so then you, once it's passed then, July one, you're good to go. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, first reading of ordinance twenty-five zero zero six. Uh, amended the zoning map of Bolivar for the property owned by Bolivar Energy Authority on Highway eighteen from R one to B one. And what that is, they're building a, they're building a fiber optic shed storage facility out there behind. The uh, behind their building and the contractor came, I don't know that we technically, Tom said we didn't technically have to do this, but. The contractor, once they, we realized R one, that Tony asked if we would put it in B one, so that's what this is, uh, but it, it's just changed that. It's just changed us where BEA's land parcel land is from uh R one to, to neighborhood business. And planning commission sent a positive recommendation for that as well.
Make the motion with approval.
Second.
Was you, did you have a question, was you?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. McKenna, if you will cast your votes. Waiting on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, move on to the next. Motion carried. Now we're gonna call it up.
Thank you.
Motion, uh, so, motion carried. Now we have reading of ordinance twenty-five zero zero seven. Uh, amendment to ordinance twenty-four zero zero one relative to the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. And this is our budget amendments. Uh, as you can see, this is, it was a, let me get to my sheet here, big number on our budget amendments, so. But a lot of that was uh grants. Found my paper here, I'm sorry. Alright, here we go. So, um, but while I'm go, if y'all have any questions on the budget amendments, let, let me know. But uh, ideally, so we got together and some of the larger ones, basically, we, these amendments or anything where we overspent or underspent. Grants that when the candidate for that has came in or someone that have not came in, uh, we have to pass, we have to have a balanced budget at the end of the year, so. Um, the larger ones, um, the workman's comp, which so hard to budget from that. Um, as well as some of the extra rep, I mean, extra expenditures, uh, go over, we um had on. The Tate Road project, right now, we're looking at one-ten to one-fifty. Our task force, um, police departments, one-sixty-five. H R A was sixty-five thousand. Repairs to the ladder truck was fourteen thousand. Purchase of Sky, Sky cops was thirty-six thousand. Uh, those are some of the larger budget amendments that, you know, we had that.
Where's this at? We're trying to find it.
The, it's, it looks like this. Oh, hold on, so y'all was, looks like, wait a minute, that's the, it should be, here we go. Like, it should look like that.
Which page?
I don't know which page. It should say like that.
This reading.
Yeah.
Is that that ordinance number twenty-five?
Ordinance, it should say ordinance number twenty-five, yeah, yeah. I'm just reading notes from.
Okay.
Listen, that's a, so this is the total, that's the whole thing there. But I, I didn't go, I didn't go line for line on all of them. Um, I just hit some of the larger, the larger ones, I don't know. And if y'all have questions about any of those amendments, feel free to ask, or whatever answers I can give you, I can give a list and we can look them up tomorrow. But those were just like, so some of the bigger, bigger numbers of the uh expenditures. Any questions on that? Alright, if not, is there a, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five zero zero seven?
Make the motion with approval.
Alright, we have a motion from Mr. Williams that are second, second by Mr. Brown. I'm sorry, if you will cast your votes. Motion carried. We'll have to pass the second reading of that at the next meeting. And if, like I said, y'all do have any questions on it, let me know, I can give. Uh, first reading of ordinance twenty-five zero zero eight, an ordinance to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year of July one-twenty-five ended in June thirty of twenty-six. This is our uh budget here. It should, well, this is the actual ordinance here, twenty-five zero zero eight. And then the budget is behind it. I'm just going over the cover sheet, but yeah, so. I'mma pull out, I'mma point out some of the hot topics in the budget and then if there's questions or anything, feel free to ask me or. If I don't have answers tonight, I can give them for you uh, um, tomorrow. So, budget, we, we presented this to the budget committee. Two, two weeks, something, something like that. We had the budget committee, did send a positive recommendation on this. Um, total revenues of seven million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand uh for the city. And total expenditures were seven million two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. Leaving, leaving a contribution to the fund balance of nineteen thousand one forty-six, which remove the fund balance from today at four million two ninety-four. To four million three thirteen. Uh, this does set the tax rate with no tax increase, uh, with our current, current tax rate in place. Some of the hot points in the budget that I would like you guys to know, we uh did include a five percent uh cost of living increase. For all the uh, all the employees, as well as uh longevity for all of the employees of year. For, after four years, it's a hundred dollars a year. Did I say that right? Employee? Twenty, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-five dollars starting at four years. It starts at a hundred dollars. Jerry said I owe him some money. He was looking real hard. Twenty-five a year, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. It started, it starts at a hundred, sorry. Uh, for, for longevity, as well as eleven point seven-five percent. That we pay to the um, uh, T C R S on behalf of the employees. They don't have to pay anything into their retirement employee. Uh, employer, we pay it all for. And then also our cost of uh insurance, we are moving our employees from Blue Cross, I mean, sorry, from Signet. Will be moving to Blue Cross Shield. That was a very significant saving, but I'll just wanna pause and commend our uh staff, office staff, our Lisa, Karen, everybody that works on it, as well as all department heads. They do everything they can to live within their means and I'll just say thank you to all of them. But those are the highlights of the budget and like I said, the pot, the. Budget committee passed with a positive recommendation and this will be our first reading of it. And if there's any questions or changes or things that y'all would like to point out. Open to doing it, but that's all I wanna put out from there.
Tell me, have we approved? Paper somewhere. Anyway, approve the budget for twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget.
Okay.
Make a motion that will.
Motion by Mr. McKenna is there, second.
Second.
Second, uh, by Mr. Brown.
Oh, Golden.
I'm sorry, Mr. It's hard to hear which one y'all saying. Mr. Gold, there ain't a question or nothing? Alright, if not, you cast your vote. Motion carried. Sorry about that. Uh, moving on to the first reading of ordinance twenty-five zero zero nine. To amend the municipal code for court costs. I got too many papers up here.
Yeah, I do too.
Let me look at you. Uh, basically, right now, court costs is one-twenty-five. Uh, police department asks us to move that to one-thirty. M T A S has a fee. I'm making sure I say this right. Is it going up two dollars?
It's going up two.
It's going up two dollars and we haven't raised the, we haven't raised them since I've been there, I was at seven years. So we're asking the council for approval to go up from one-twenty-five to one-thirty. And that covers the cost of that uh increase from M T A S, the admin fee on that, uh, um.
What was it brought up from last time?
From one.
One-twenty-five, the last time we addressed court costs. It had been about fifteen years since it had been addressed when we did it then. This time, we're about seven years in.
I make a motion with approval.
Second. Was you gonna ask my question?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, do we think it's gonna go up again in the next two or three years, or is, is there any inkling?
Unless there's something else that happens, uh, I wouldn't see, probably not within probably five years, we'll probably look at it again.
Gotcha.
Alright, that was a motion by Ms. Ray, a second by Mr. Woods. Any other questions? Alright, place your vote. Alright, motion carried. That's all we have on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I think I need to bring something up first, probably adjourn, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was looking in the uh Jackson Sun one day and they, this is back in June the fourth. It was a groundbreaking of new low-income housing unit in Jackson. And that's what we need here in Bolivar. You'd be surprised how many people live in them hotels here in Bolivar. And uh, it's gonna be uh Blue Creek Apartment in College of Blue Creek. They gonna add another forty-two renter homes. There in Jackson. And the funding, let me get to the funding. The funding is being, is coming through the low-income housing tax credit awarded by the Tennessee Housing Development Authority. Tolding up to twenty-three million dollars. They add a hundred and twelve affordable housing unit. That is something that we are, uh, Representative Shaw was there, if we need any questions, we can ask him, but that is something that we desperately. Need here in Bolivar is housing. And uh, and I, I mean, when I went up to, to the uh hotel, I mean, it was just amazing. To see how many family that lives in that one room. Uh, and I think we can do better than what we doing. I really do. And uh, and I liked, I think that might come under. The Housing Authority, I believe, Jackson Housing Authority. I would like to see can we do a resolution to have them for next month. Uh, the twenty-third, well, the twenty-third of this month, on special call meeting to uh have a resolution that's sent over to them, that they should look into that, seriously.
Yeah, they, uh, you, when you say, you're talking about Bolivar housing, right?
I'm assumed, yeah, yeah, cause this came through Jackson.
Yeah, we, uh, we actually have, two weeks ago, it was me and we had, uh, Mr. Miller, Mike talked about that, cause he's on that board. And he, they have actively tried to go out for some of that funding to get stuff done, but what he talked about, they lose out to a lot to the bigger cities of Jacksons and Memphis and stuff like that. But absolutely, I agree, we, housing is a issue, been an issue for a while, so uh, we can see if Mike can come and I'll see if he can come to our next council meeting. See if there's something that we can do to support him.
Okay, okay.
Now, if you remember, we did, few years back, we started that, that grant, I mean, I say grant, the pilot that they were paying to us, we cut that out, that they could keep that money. Uh, that they could go after grants with matches and build and do stuff, cause a lot of the housing, they, a lot of public housing now is just not projects. They actually have houses.
Houses, correct.
And they are still on his vital list and they can come through that process.
Okay.
I'll get him to call and talk, we've talked about, yeah, we.
And we can have him, cause I think.
And if there's something we can do as a council to support.
Yeah, I, I think there's something we need to do for the community also. About time for us to do something for city of Bolivar, you know. And uh, and I know Ms. Miller have said something about it and I have said something about it, but that's fine. I was gonna do a resolution, but. Uh, if you can get Mike to here the twenty-third, I just, I won't do a resolution, cause he's gonna be here, so. But that's something that we seriously, seriously need to uh address. And uh, that's basically what I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to hold nobody up, but, but uh, I mean, that's just something we need. I mean, that's just.
You got the right person, like getting Mike, he knows something about that. He, we wouldn't have to be trying to find out stuff he would know.
Yeah. They a hundred and, I think it was like a hundred and twelve.
Units, I think.
Units, yeah, a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twelve, or something like that. Then it got twenty-some houses. I think it said twenty-some houses. Yeah, twenty-some houses they dealing for low income. And that's something that we really desperately need here in Bolivar. And if.
Agree.
And if nothing else, uh, Mr. Mayor, since I'm holding you up, I'll make a motion with adjourn.
Alright, motion by Mr. McKenna is a second. Second by Mr. Woods, all in favor, say aye. And the poll, motion carried.